Uh, this is the June sixth, twenty seventeen Planning Board meeting. Um, our seven o'clock agenda item is running late, so we're gonna go out of order. Amy? Amy?
Okay, I just wanted to bring up something that was discussed at town meeting in April. And, um, we can discuss it in the future, but I've been to three meetings concerning recreational marijuana, so I figured I'd share what I learned while I was there. And, um, as of today, there are about forty towns that have opted out of marijuana, inclu- recreational marijuana, including Southborough and Westborough. And Northborough was a town that voted no to legalizing recreational marijuana. So I actually wanted to ask the Planning Board if not tonight, sometime in the future, we could write a letter maybe to the selectmen just to bring up the possibility. Because to opt out or regulate recreational marijuana, there has to be a ballot initiative. So there are three phases, it has to be on the ballot, and it has to have two town meeting articles. So it's a three-phase thing. And the reason why is because it is different than medical marijuana. And if your town opts out, it doesn't affect medical marijuana at all. We do have a cultivation facility coming in, it won't affect that at all. It won't affect the legalization of it. People can still smoke it in their house, do whatever they want in their house, they can grow it in their house. But what I've learned from these meetings is that a lot of towns are opting out just to play it safe. They don't wanna, once you go in, all in, it's grandfathered forever. So they want to stand back, see what happens, and if it seems like a good thing, then they can always opt in. Colorado was an opt-in state where you had to opt in, and only a third of the towns and cities opted in. And they already have more shops than Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks combined. And I have pages of facts that they gave me that I can share, but we didn't need to do that tonight. And also, um, what they talked about at this meeting is that what towns or people try to say is recreational marijuana will bring in revenue. The town would get two percent revenue, so you'd have to sell a million dollars worth of marijuana to get twenty thousand dollars for your town. And I was in Westborough, and, um, the police chief was there. And he said the cost for his department would greatly outweigh the revenues that would come in. And also, what makes it hard, if you allow recreational marijuana to be sold, it's not just buds and leaves, it's actually all the edibles. This one is candy, this one's marijuana. And there's no difference, the kids can't tell the difference. This little fish right here is four servings. And they said with all the different edibles and there's something called shatter, which I had never heard of, but I Googled it when I got home. And it's seventy to ninety percent more potent than any bud. It's like, you'd have to look it up when you get home and you'd be shocked.
Is it an edible?
It, it looks like peanut brittle, it's actually glass, and it's like ninety percent THC. So when you
You eat it?
You eat it. No, I think they burn it. I think, I don't know much about it, but I think you, um, break it up and you burn it, like smoking in a pipe. But there are edibles like candy, and there's lollipops, and there's soda, and what they say about the recreational marijuana is the cigarette industry is coming in. They're taking all of what they did in the early twenties and thirties, they marketed towards the military and the kids, and they're just having this big rollout of they come in first and say, okay, well, we'll start it medically, so everybody feels like, okay, it's a safe thing to do. And then we'll come in recreationally, and it's just a whole different ballgame. They just said the amount of edibles that come in, and you can't say, we only want buds, we don't want edibles. So all the other towns, forty right now, have opted out, including Southborough, Westborough, Hockington, Holliston. Shrewsbury has a moratorium, Grafton has a moratorium, Marlborough's looking into it. But I just feel for Northborough, it would be safer to start and opt out. And then if you think it's a good thing, and people are making a lot of money, and it sounds like it's good for our town, then we can opt in. Because that's the way the other towns are looking. And I actually, um, talked to a lot of people in town, and they're like, well, aren't we gonna opt out? Like, they already think it's a given, they couldn't believe that it wouldn't be on the ballot. And at least by even just putting it on the ballot, it gives the town a choice. Like, maybe they won't vote to opt it out, maybe people do want it. But at least it gives the people a chance to vote on it, because in November, it was voted no in our town.
Is that the result of the general, uh, of the election?
The election in November.
Election itself?
There were like, I think it was nine or sixteen communities in Massachusetts overall that voted no. In Northborough, Westborough, Shrewsbury, we're all part of that. And that's why Westborough went forward, and they already opted out, and Southborough.
So, do you think it's safe to say that if, through the election process, or through the polling process, the town voted against us, that we would have success with that kind of an article at town meeting?
I do, and I think it's worth a chance, because if you don't, all the people who voted no, like, that I talked to, they're like, they already think it is opted out. Like, they're like, well, we already voted no, Northborough was one of the no communities, doesn't that mean no? I said, no, we have to go through this process.
That's naive for them to think that.
Right, but a lot of people do, or they also think that the town's gonna have the election, because all the other surrounding towns are.
Right.
They're like, why would it be off the ballot? Why don't we at least bring it to ballot?
Right, okay.
But to do it, it would be, and KP Law did all of Westborough's. They wrote all their, they wrote the ballot, they wrote the warrant article, so for us to do it, we could just go to them and do the same thing.
Just swap the names.
Yeah, and the way they did it too is, when they went to town meeting, they had the opt-out warrant article, but then if it failed, they also had regulation, because you can regulate where it goes and the times and the hours. So they had a backup in case it failed.
Seems like the right way to go.
And it's not a rush right now, but I know summer goes by fast, so I would love to at least
We're talking about town meeting
Right.
Two thousand and eighteen, so, I mean, it's not
And there was an article in the paper where the selectmen were talking about it before the last town meeting, and Jason Pearl, you know, brought it up, and the other members said, well, we don't know enough about it to really make a decision yet. And I've been to three meetings now, and they are trying to back off, because the people in Westborough that did it, they've spent five years researching, they gave me all these papers, and it's all backed with facts, like, we're not giving out fake facts. They're like, you can use all the facts we have, so you don't have to research it. And I wasn't the only town there, there was Lawrence, there was Watertown, like, this is a full, a filled room. And, um, they're just trying to help out the other towns. And if you want, they may come in and speak to our selectmen, they would've done it last year, but they're trying to back off, they're like, we've been doing this for five years, and we don't get paid for this. And they've gone all over Massachusetts, giving, you know, just helping out, because they've been researching it for over five years. So, they might come in if I ask them, or myself, or there were a couple other Northborough people who went to the meeting. We could do a little presentation for the selectmen. And there's a lot on C, on the Central Mass website, there are videos, and, um, the Westborough Group too. I included, um, their link at the bottom, and that has all the information that they've found, so.
Didn't the Westborough Group, wasn't it, I mean, I know there was a lot of people on it, but didn't it consist of, like, someone from the school committee, um, someone from like a, sort of like a local church?
I know the church should get involved.
Yeah.
Just because they brought it up at the church, and the church, the person in charge of the church shared it with the church, but he wasn't involved. There is someone on the school committee, but the person in charge was the man, he was a planning board member.
I was gonna say, and I also think there was a board of selectmen, I, I mean, I just remember
Well, he started it, him and his wife, and they got everybody else on board, and even like the Westborough Police Chief was there, and I'm sure he'd talked to our police chief, like, after doing research, he's like, the revenue that we get would never offset the cost that it would cost a town to, to start off. But what's the main thing, for people who really want the marijuana in town, it doesn't limit anyone, it's still legal in your house. It's not gonna stop that. It's not gonna stop the medical facility to go in. It's just gonna put a hold on all the shops that are selling the edibles and
So it's the distribution?
Well, you, you can do recreational cultivation too, there's four different things. It's distribution, cultivation, and, um, I don't know what the other two are.
But I, but I believe the towns that are opting out are opting out of it altogether.
All together, yeah.
It's, you know, they're, they're, um
On the recreational side.
On the recreational side. Yeah, and Westborough was the first community in Massachusetts to do it. And, um, and they have an earlier town meeting, they're, they're, I think they're in March. And then there were, um, a lot, I didn't realize it was up to forty.
Yeah.
But there were a lot of towns that did follow suit. I mean, a lot of copland pages, not that it has to be KP Law, but, um, there were a lot of communities that, you know, adopted a moratorium, um, which is what, you know, we all did with medical marijuana. And then, again, there were a lot of communities that, you know, decided to do the opt-out, but it's, it's, it is more involved. You have to go, you have to do the ballot, um, and, uh, and then town meeting.
Right.
And there are some links on the second page where I got the forty names of the communities. They're just recent articles that list, they have an interactive map that changes day by day by the people who are opting out, or so that's on the second page.
Did you say ballot and then town meeting? I thought it's usually you go to town meeting, and then if it passes the town meeting, it goes to ballot.
Uh, well, I didn't mean it any particular order, I just mean you have to do both.
Okay.
Yeah, because they are doing it out of order, like, whichever town has what, whatever comes first, but you have to have both pass.
Yeah, like the town of Shrewsbury does their elections first and then town meeting.
Okay.
We do our town meeting first, and then the elections are a couple weeks after.
It almost seems like the election should be first for something like this, because if they vote no, then there's no reason to go forward with it at town meeting. Or what if you vote yes at town meeting, and then the ballot votes no?
Well, as always, I mean, that's always a risk.
In either direction.
Right, right.
The room's always stacked at town meeting. It doesn't represent
Right.
town overall, but not that the election does entirely, because people are pretty bad at getting to the polls, but they're better going to the polls than they are at town meeting.
So do you, do you want to take the initiative to either get somebody from Westborough or you yourself?
Sure.
Go to the selectmen?
Sure, but I was wondering if our planning board should write a letter saying that, you know,
We support it?
We support it, because that's how Westborough did it and Southborough did it, it was started with the planning board.
Yep.
And then if they want or need more information, I'd be willing to go, or I'll try to get the Westborough people to come in.
Okay. How do you guys feel about that?
I'm not in support, I'm, I'm fine with medical marijuana, with recreational marijuana and having it in town, so from a personal perspective, I'm fine with it, so I'm implying not to support it. On the other hand, as a planning board member, it's not just about my personal views, so I have to kind of think about it.
I, I'm in sync with Leslie. I, I'm really torn on that one.
But don't you think you should give the people the right to be able to vote on it?
That's what I'm talking
Even if, like Leslie just said, like, it's, there's far, four or five of us here, but there's a whole town of people.
Do you not necessarily support
When I look at other issues that we discuss as a board, I don't look that far ahead, I look, you know, the, this is a right, typically, we don't look at that, we look at our, we have our own discussion, we hammer out the issues, and then we vote. Um, so that would be an exception, so that's why I have to kind of
You're not, you're not supporting the initiative.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay, I'm just saying you're not supporting the initiative itself, you're supporting putting it to the citizens to vote on.
Well, I understand, but I'm saying that we've never, I've never done that with any other planning board issue before, we've always
But it hasn't, because they don't normally go that way.
No, but there are things that can go to town meeting.
Yeah.
For decisions.
And you also need the, the polling process as well, which is a little different.
Yeah, that's why I have to kind of roll it over, I'm not in a position right now to
So, next meeting maybe?
Yeah, we can talk about it. Next meeting.
Michelle's not here.
Michelle's input as well.
Okay.
Is Michelle coming tonight? No?
No, she's, um, she's, yeah.
Um, and also too, the, um, it doesn't, I mean, and I think Amy knows this, I mean, it doesn't have to be coming from the planning board, I mean, it can, it can come, I mean, if someone wants to approach the selectmen
Right.
You know, I mean, it could be, you know, a citizens group, it could be an individual, um
That's what I would do if the planning board didn't support it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think if, if, you know, one board approached the other board, you know, there's more behind that, but
Right. Can we, um, since it's after seven fifteen, can we take the Barefoot Road matter?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, um, the Barefoot Road is, just so you know, I mean, I, I think it's advisable to, you know, it is time, but it's not a public hearing, so, um, it's a, it's a public, you know, meeting with a, with a president.
Yep, okay. So, let's jump the agenda again, site plan approval for fifty-five Barefoot Road installation of a solar carport over four existing rows of parking. Yep?
And Mike Lodi, the conductor and the narrator, on your behalf, National Grid. And If you guys hear this, if you want to see things better here. This is currently a National Grid office and, um, kind of control, control center for much of their, uh, system. It is on the north side of town, in Barefoot Road, in industrial zone section. I included a lot of paper in this, I apologize, but we are doing all of the design work. This project is really affiliated with Green Communities Act, National Grid, and it was deregulated, I don't think, years ago. It was no longer allowed to own, um, generation electricity distribution and transmission assets. And Green Communities Act in an effort to kind of promote solar on a larger scale. Years ago, a lot of utilities, including National Grid, EverSource, Unmitil, et cetera, did own a twenty-five megawatts of solar, and that rule very likely is going to expire December thirty-first. Maybe they extended, but we don't really know yet, right now, it's set to expire December thirty-first, so National Grid is trying to finish some additional, they've already done about five or, I can't remember, fifteen megawatts in the state, and want to build additional ten as part of their program. And what they do, they do more innovative things with it than the average, because I also develop solar on large scale throughout the state. Usually it's just put in, build as much as you can and move on. National Grid's app right is focusing on what impacts are on the distribution system, um, how it affects operation of their system, but it doesn't impact anyone really nearby, any residents or businesses nearby. They're still looking at really high, high-end harmonics, frequency, things like that on their utility system. Also just modeling back at substations, when they do have areas where there's a lot of solar. Northborough is not a town with a lot of solar, but it is an area where they check what happens back at substations for their monitoring devices. And, um, they're also doing some testing with battery storage, um, between here and another site, where they want to see when they can the, the, I don't want to talk so much about electricity, but, uh, the, when you create, when you generate solar electricity, you peak middle of the day and it tails off, just like sun, you know, it's it's slow in the morning, bright in the middle of the day, and tails off at the end. When you look at the curve of usage electricity, just like your house, for those that work every day, you wake up in the morning, cooking breakfast, taking showers, use a lot of power during the day when no one's home, nothing's going on, end of the day, basically what happened. They want to use these batteries, and the one who talked about that later was a very small battery, to try to push the curve so they are able to discharge power when people use it the most, middle of the day, typically, most people are at home. Those that are, you know, they use solar electricity, they have to go off. So as a fact of the project, um, the existing building, as I mentioned, houses offices for National Grid, and the parking lot is for employees. Uh, where the private area is, as, as noted, we have a patient, um, just along four rows of the parking, we have just a parking lot, uh, moving in parking spaces. We're not cutting down any trees, actually, that's not directly on, we're gonna have to move a tree. Here's a rendering of the system with an overlay of the aerial soil. So the main issue for the building is here, we have rows of solar in multiple sections of parking. Islands will not be affected except in one portion here, we're gonna put a front end, add a transformer, some switch here, and, um, some data access to the system, that, that helps us monitor this remotely, so if it's a fault or something shuts down, we can notify, we can act where necessary. Um, there is one tree on this island that is right in the middle area we selected. We are gonna try to move it, but in my experience in the past, moving or tearing a tree, it doesn't always work, so we're more than likely gonna have to replace it with somebody at the time. The thing we have it right now is that, you know, we can pull the National Grid, this one, this is true, I had it. We said, we'll try to move it, and if it fails, we'll plant one, and that is pretty much as large as we can, yeah, well, it's hard to replace sixty, it's true, for another one. Um, the solar array itself is gonna be, um, actually, I'm gonna jump to catch one, the cross-section to show, it looks like, it's starting to Each section of the solar array is supported by a steel column, uh, each column is roughly thirty feet, so that's a two parking lot. And there's a steel, nice steel table foots on top, with solar panels lined up. We first drill a concrete pier foundation, the three-bar, attach the columns to the top, and then build pillars on top. I did, you don't have to exactly, I'm gonna put a picture of a very similar installation. It's just a concrete pile, in our case, though, we're gonna put concrete flush at the base. There's a steel column, another steel column, and a row of, uh, solar panels on top. We will be trenching across the parking lot and over the islands, uh, between trees, because everything is wired together up inside the framework, and then goes back underground, all the way back to the, um, transformer. And then from our transformer, this is another trench will extend across the site to, up by the street, there was an existing transformer right on the street right near one of their entrances. We need to add, for safety reasons, a disconnect switch, and, um, a metering device will be there also. This system is not going to be directly connected to the building at all, this is really a standalone power system. And you have to have the ability to turn it on, shut it off remotely, in addition to you have the monitor how much power it generates, and if there's ever an emergency or a situation that the power is lost on site, the system immediately shuts down, will often turn back on until it launches electricity on the excuse me, on the, um, here. That's more of a safety thing for the National Grid employees, very much hopefully, because when there's a power outage, a tree comes down during a sunny day, if you're putting power up the side of that tree, so it's the, not from a substation side, you have the lines still energized by the solar arrays, very dangerous for works. As soon as the tree's down, line's off, they can power it on site, so it's gonna be shut down if there's a power outage. As I mentioned, the, the mobile battery storage, I mean, it, it sounds like more of a regular, it's basically a dual-wheeled trailer. It's a box about the size of that, actually, the case there, probably twice the size of that. It has, it's a two hundred and fifty kilowatt battery with two hundred, with five hundred kilowatt-hours of storage. What they, they, they have not purchased it yet, it's most likely gonna be housed at their other facility in Sutton, but they have the option, they asked the design ability to use cables to connect it to the system, so it can be charged and discharged with the solar. But it's not gonna be a perfect feature, so it'll be there once in a while, and we're gone most of the time. It's also a battery that they made at other locations during storms for power, uh, but we just want to have the option to store it on-site for short periods of time. What that means, I don't know, it's not a perfect feature, it's why they put it on a truck, on a, a trailer. It, it does get towed around with just enough large pickup truck, a dual-wheeled pickup truck, and, um, it doesn't impact the system much, although they're just doing physical plant and build. So I have some, I have some pictures of the construction process. Um, as I said, we are not adding any This is a project we just completed in Morewell, Massachusetts. Um, there's a lot going on here, but it basically shows the process of drilling foundations, concrete, three-bar inside the foundations, these here were twelve BP, which is very similar to what we're doing on the current road site. And then this steel interaction. This system was slightly different in that instead of having, um, one consistent angle facing to the southwest, these had two angles, because the system was going north-south, one to snow to slump in towards the middle where there were islands. So we do take up a good chunk of the parking lot, we phase the construction to kind of minimize the impact to employees, but luckily, the parking lot's bigger than what they need for employees that are working here now, so we will take probably a third of the parking at each time and work that way. Uh, we will put silt sacks in each of the catch basins on-site prior to construction, saw cut trenches, backfill, moving, moving permits, electrical permits. We're damaging technical testing already, and the middle design of the foundations, so we submit the building department plans, we report. Um, the area was newly restored, uh, it is parking now, so it will continue parking, we may have to re-strike or re seal the parking lot, that's in one tree that I mentioned earlier, we had. We do not anticipate taking that paint trees, using any grass area, we're not for using parking spaces. There'll be no new employees housed here, no additional water or sewer use. Uh, we will have one technician show up on average a month, or even, that's probably about a lot, we do most of the watering remotely. During the construction period will last, uh, three to five months, weather-dependent. And we work, you just, you know, during the day, um, occasional Saturdays, typically not Sundays, once we get rid of our behind schedule work without allow, based upon town laws. And, I can't think of what else I have on this, it's, we're basically building a carport with solar already on site.
Okay, cool. Amy?
I just had a couple questions. Um, one of them, I think you answered, because I was talking, I was thinking about the concrete piers, taking up spaces, so would you have to increase parking? But it sounds like they're gonna be installed underground, so you're not gonna be taking up any parking?
That's correct, they'll be flush. One of the pages shows, each one of these locations, the concrete here, and we try to put it between parking spaces, so that we will take up, the, the beams will be roughly twelve inch by sixteen inch I beams. So those will be above the cars, but it's kind of like parking in a wall or something protecting, um, parking areas. You bump into a serving, but you have to, you know, just, I don't think you can go in fast enough in parking, you go through, you don't get beat, so, um, there will be a lot of parking.
Okay, so you're not adding any parking either. Okay, one other question I had is, because, um, I haven't, well, I've seen these carports actually at your mass, but, um, to bring the water away, like, in the winter, when the snow melts, do you ever have accumulation of, like, icicles, or would it cause icing on the parking lot? Like, are there gutters that bring the water away off the carports?
Uh, there are no gutters bringing it away, we didn't want to, um, change stormwater conditions on-site, because each, I should mention that. Um, each solar panel, there's a one-inch space, actually, if you can see on this one. You can barely see it here, but there is that white line
Yep.
which is actually a gap, and you leave it that way. There is actually one in Milford, in, um, Route one-nine, uh, that has a complete gutter system. What we do then, you have to completely redesign the stormwater controls on the parking lot, because the parking lot right now is created such that it goes towards catch basins and catch stations for the rest of the system. Um, but when we put these systems up, we're gonna be above the parking lot, and there's slopes, but it's a six-foot by three-foot, roughly, solar pin. So when water hits it, it'll, you know, roll down the solar pin and drip off the edge. So it's essentially where it is, since there's no islands between the places we're working, um, all the water will be exactly the same as ours. And so in the winter time, we do have snow guards, I mentioned, so that the, the snow won't just slump off. And there is possibility, actually, if we're doing the same, similar projects in, um, Northborough, in, sorry, Northbridge, Sutton, Worcester, for National Grid, and the same questions come up. Uh, we do have snow guards, and there's little tabs essentially put between the solar panels, that just keep things from sliding off. Snow will melt up in here and drip down, and if, if, during the day, it melts, at night it freezes, there certainly is a potential for ice. But a lot of the bias is National Grid to be more diligent, and actually, they are extremely diligent with this parking lot, right? National Grid is very safety conscious, does a lot of work on their parking areas, um, same. So they can do less plowing, but more sanding, so it's a bit of a trade-off.
So these are gonna have snow guards?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that was a, I mean, the slope on the, they seem like a shallow, more shallow solar slope than you see on houses, so
It is, it's seven degrees, which is very slight.
Yeah.
It's not much at all. We have water, we, snow could slump off of it if there was no snow guard, but even then, it's a really slow process, that's what happens, and it just drops onto the travelway between. And the biggest complaints folks have, that there are no snow guards, is if you're at work during a snowstorm, or at the snowstorm night before, you drive in a nice, dry parking spot, it slumps off behind your car, and you go through a small snowbank, it's a little snow guard, that would be problematic.
They don't have to clean their car up anymore.
Right, exactly.
Seems like a good, good trade-off.
And in the summertime, your car will be a thousand degrees.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Snow plowing, putting these columns in there, is that gonna be a nightmare, snow plow?
Um, as long as the plow drivers pay attention, just like any parking lot, you know, because it's one every third pizza, you easily drive in the, the lowest point. Um, we see a similar one, the lowest point in the low sign is, we are really keen to be, and, um, so they, they have easily drive between. The one we did in Morewell, uh, they put those islands on most of the, one section didn't have islands, uh, but they just plowed right through, it's clean and dry, just like there was nothing. It's just like one on street, like, foundations.
As an editorial comment, I, I'm excited about it, I think it's a good idea.
Yep. So I apologize if you mentioned this, this will be used to power the building, or will be beyond, well beyond what
It's, yeah, it, it, and the total kilowatts we're piercing is roughly, in the, um, there's nineteen hundred and eight panels that need to be placed here. And, um, in the initial filing, I had solar world modules of three hundred and forty-five watts each. But since from the time I estimated this on, in eleven, until now, solar world is a megawatt. So we're buying different modules that are actually larger, so we'll actually produce more power more power than the building needs. And because of grid communities act, they cannot have it powered, it will only structure, it has to be set out. So this is just a standalone, just like the ones you see on 45.
Right, right.
Standalone system where the power is just going into the grid and being used.
And is this a proof of concept with the, the idea of expanding it, or is this the...
Expanding the system?
Yeah.
No, there's really no other space without making significant change to the property. We didn't want to touch the field area to the beams. And there's already a little bit of soil on the roof, but the roof has so many penetrations in it, it's not a good roof for solar, so yeah, there's no...
This is it, okay.
Yeah, there's no incentive to expand.
Kind of lighting under those columns?
Yes, oh, sorry, I totally forgot. We are removing all of the existing parking lot ramps and installing LED lighting underneath the canopies. We had, in part of the package included a automatic light plan that shows, I mean, it's, this is an impossible thing to read, but the dark dots out here where there's no additional light spray from the canopies. And since they're underneath the canopies and on the backside of modules, most of the light was straight down, so these definitely complies with dark sky provisions for lighting.
So is this actually going to give off, it's going to throw off less light to adjacent properties than what's there presently?
I cannot compare the two, and I don't have the original information from that, so I don't know. It's LED lighting, which is different, we are going to set it up so they have controls such that they can put some, none, or all of the lights on. And they do have two shifts out here, and actually they have three shifts. And I know that they are, 24/7 a week, this part is parked in this section, so they don't want to have those on all the time. But further out, they will have the option to shut those off.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? No? No? Fred? Anything you'd like to say?
Um...
We do have your letter.
I have my letter. It's pretty straightforward.
I do see that.
I did. The letter just indicates that they did need site plan approval, and that they are required to get an earthwork permit because of the volatile material that's removed for the concrete piers that exceed the minimum threshold for receiving permit. And then just recommendation that they'll need a trench permit from the DPW and a roadway opening permit if they have to go out into barefoot road to make a connection to the electrical service. And then they have their plan that would be appropriate when it's all done. We have something on the file.
We know from the design review, there was an issue or a question about the materials being used.
Yeah.
Specifically the galvanized steel. Do you have any comments on the use of galvanized steel for this type of problem?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
The, the, Mike had appeared before the design review on May 31st, and that, you know, we did, we talked a, actually, a lot about the questions that Amy raised. There were several questions about snow removal, how the snow sheds off of the panels and then snow removal in the parking lot. But overall, the, the question was, and, and Mike agrees, with placing a condition in the site plan, you know, approval decision about, you know, routine maintenance being performed, and that there would be a paint quality check done as part of the routine maintenance. Tom Riordan, who's our, one of the architects on the board, gave us all a lesson about galvanized steel, and I guess if it's not maintained, I guess, you know, just like our appealing houses, but it seems to have like a six to eight year lifespan that Tom has noticed on, particularly like the MBTA stations. And then, and a lot of places don't maintain it, and they obviously just, you know, it goes to rot, it's still structurally sound, but it's, it's a rust appearance instead of the grayish color. So, you know, the, I can word the condition, I don't have the exact wording tonight, but again, Mike agreed, you know, that, that would be a condition that, you know, they could adhere to in the decision.
So that condition is that they're going to repaint the structures every two years?
No, not, not every two years, that, I think it was every six months that, that you would do a maintenance check?
Yeah, we do, every quarter, we do a physical check, walkthrough of the system, just to look for any loose bolts, hanging wires, anything like that. And we also just inspect the steel. We don't want to see cracking, which would never happen in such, it never, it rarely happens. We also, what I said, what I admitted to is we would inspect the quality of the galvanization in any surface coming through. We would paint over it or galvanize, this cold galvanization, it was a great concept, so my experience is different than the gentleman who's...
Yep, Tom Riordan, but that's...
We've got sites, I have pretty, I've installed sites in Dorchester and in Eric, New Orleans. And the non-galvanized stuff is rotting left and right, the galvanized stuff looks the same when it's not that heated, so I'm not worried about that condition, that's why I was happy to agree to this. I do know what he's talking about, I have seen some, you know, some poor quality galvanization work, where you see rust get through, but it just leads to that project versus galvanization. So technology, yeah.
So that was the only question from, or the, you know, request from the design review committee. And then I had, I mean, Fred obviously reviewed it on behalf of, you know, engineering and DPW, and I had spoken to, actually, this was before the design review committee, but I had spoken to the DPW director, and his main question or concern was originally that our plans didn't have the, the snow guards, and, but those have since been, you know, the applicant has since stated that they, that they are putting those on. So that was, and then there was a review letter from the fire chief, and he didn't have any issues with the proposal.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? It's not a public hearing, so we don't have to close the public hearing, we can just move to your motion.
Yes, yep.
Would anyone else make an offer?
To hear input from the, even though it's not a public hearing, we have the option to, don't we?
Okay. Is there any comment from the audience?
Just a couple of questions.
Name an address.
Sure.
Name an address.
Oh, sure.
I know we all know you, but...
No, wow. That was Lhaso, 18 Farm Railway. Why every other parking lot, there are existing landscape islands between, that we want to have?
I saw those on parking areas, huh?
Yeah.
Now, the galvanized steel is going to run straight down to the pavement, I take it?
Yes.
So being galvanized, I imagine, and this is probably a follow-up question with Fred, I imagine with the snow removal, you're going to be, your snowplow contractors are going to be relying heavily on salt to melt under the canopies?
They may also use, you know, the accident materials out there pretty heavily. I can't get calcium chloride, and I can't get any of the other things, it's not just salt.
Any concern with the water, Fred, or...
Uh, no, the, no. There is basically, it's the same, it's the same as a roadway. There is, there is a groundwater area that, groundwater areas that enter onto this site, but the project as shown doesn't indicate that there's an excessive amount of chemicals that could be added, anyone, and it would be on, what we brought here, probably.
The other question was, which way are they erasing?
North is up on the maps, and they think they tilted it to the southwest.
Tilted to the southwest. They're probably just about laying flat with a 70 degree angle, so is that a reflection or anything?
You know, the solar panels are actually designed, I mean, they make power via the sunlight, so they actually have anti-reflective coatings on it, and reflect, it's not like , you know, where you have a huge reflection, you have a windshield. You know, there is a slight glare if you're self in perfect position, but since it's facing southwest, on you're going to go this direction, so there's really under no condition, even if it were just pure reflective glass, that the sunlight could shine in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, I'm the last house across from the field, so there is no expansion in the future, if you go out into the field according to what you just said.
No. To be honest, I tried, the National Grid showed me out.
Maybe it works out. My only other question is, and I'm not sure how, as far as the lighting...
Yes.
And I've done numerous of tumbling farm remodels where they've gone into the LED lighting and it's lit up the neighborhood. You plan to take down all, the whole lighting structures?
In the parking area, yes.
Okay, because my wife wasn't sure, it seemed like it'd get a little brighter over this, and we don't know if there was any lamp replacement over there or not, but might only be under the canopies, it would be a concern, but, you know, it's not it.
Well, there is, I mean, I'm not sure where your house is in relation to, there is the trees in the building, so if you're...
I'm right across the grassy area.
Right across the grassy area.
By the water, yeah.
So, yeah, we, there is going to be LED lights in the canopies there, the rule controls that can be shut off. I know they don't very, park here very often at all. I can't really speak to how often they'll have those on or off, but they will have to do it to shut it off.
All right, so that is an option, that that last row, which will be closest to my property, could be...
Yes.
Minimized or turned off completely? And that's all within the locked-in fenced-in area?
It is, yes. The entire site is locked in, easy car access, 24/7 security, the site is only...
No, Tom, you can't go turn the lights off yourself.
I was just here for a quarter, I don't know what else, but that's all the questions I have, so.
Anything else? Okay. Any questions based on that?
No.
Amy?
No.
Okay. I'll just take your motion.
I move that we vote to approve this project and grant the site plan approval, subject to the condition as suggested by the design review committee.
And by Fred.
And by Fred, yes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? On favor? I agree. Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How are you? Good.
Fred, don't worry.
Bye. Okay, Chris. Let's move on to the 7 o'clock hearing, 386 West Main Street, presentation by Chris Hurst, when you asked a minor modification to approve WTC's site.
Hello, good evening. Thank you all for letting me be late. I apologize for that. As our third position letter states early, just speaking, the board's determination approval of a minor amendment to the previously approved plan, not requiring a formal amendment to the planning that we're doing. Essentially, we're cutting the compound down in half of what was previously approved. It's like we had a 50 by 50 typical compound before, we're now proposing to cut that down to 22 by 40. In the time that's transpired since the initial discussion, the initial design of this site, which, believe it or not, I mean, we last spoke about this a year and a half, no, since the design began, more than 70 plus years ago, some of the technology that we're using has changed, and we're no longer using the equipment shelters. So if you recall, and as you can see from exhibit B to my letter, the previously approved plan had that large compound to accommodate equipment shelter that was, what do you say, place 12?
Yeah.
It's weird that I have to look that up. In the past, it was so common that I just knew that all the time, but we don't use those anymore. We just use two small cabinets now for all of our sites, and that's pretty much the way all carriers are going now. We're finding we don't need these shelters, they're a tremendous expense, and the equipment that we have is not that large. So that's the reason for knocking it down to a little less than half in size, and other than that, the pole itself remains unchanged, it's all the same proposal. So relatively simple, that's all I have, but if you guys have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer.
Do you agree with the waiver as part of allowing that shed to be the size it was?
So you granted a waiver for barbed wire? Yeah, the unstaffed equipment. Okay, so because we granted a waiver, do we have to do anything special in terms of that, or is it just going to disappear? No, actually, this, Chris didn't even, the, a staff, we told him he didn't even need to appear before the planning board. This is really something that can be handled, you know, administratively in-house, when something goes smaller than what was originally approved. But, you know, just, you know, given the interest surrounding cell towers, Chris wanted to obviously come in and just, you know...
Washington is my middle name.
Run the change by you. So what I, what I had planned on doing was just, you know, assuming that you were okay with the, with this getting smaller, is just to, you know, put a memo in, into the file reflecting, you know, the discussion tonight, and that the board is in agreement with it.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and they're not major. I was just wondering, because it did get smaller, the original plan had space for co-location for other carriers. Does this still have the same, where you have three co-locators can fit there?
Yes, as I was explaining, we're not seeing anybody using the large equipment shelters anymore.
Yep.
And the pole design remains the same as for co-locators. The compound, as you can see, we're not taking up very much of it at all, still the ratio of what we're taking, what we're leaving open, is still about the same. In all of our installations, there are occasions when some carriers may want to go outside the compound. I don't see that being the issue here, but it's happened on, I don't know, in the hundreds of these that I've done. I have seen that happen maybe a dozen times, so I can't really predict the future, but this was not designed with that regard. I mean, we do have space for...
What are these little things right here? Like, I can't read the words. There are a couple, I didn't know, is, is this the space? Because if you look at the original, there's three pads that are 10 by 15 for future leases.
Right.
And are these for the future lease, or what are these?
Nope, those are the cabinets.
Okay.
So the, what we're saying is we don't need those pads anymore.
Yep, so this is a cabinet for a future lease?
Nope, those are our, our cabinets.
Those are yours?
Yep.
So...
And what we're seeing typically is that most carriers are doing what we're doing and using one or two cabinets like this, so there's all this additional space.
What's under here, do they have that for space too?
Yes.
So you have like...
So I think the way that's drawn is to show the fence.
So you're going to have a row here, a row here, just because part of our bylaw is you have to provide for three other wireless providers.
Yeah, that's not, that's not changing.
I know, but since it's getting smaller...
Right.
We would have wanted to have to, in the future, come back and get bigger to provide for more carriers.
I mean, the idea is all of the equipment is getting smaller, so the space that we need is getting smaller, same applies for co-locators.
So this will definitely fit three more?
I can never predict what happens in the future, so for me to swear to you, I don't know what someone's going to want to do in the future, but we designed this with space for co-locators.
Okay. And another thing is, I was trying to figure out, this right here says existing edge of pavement, which, I mean, there isn't pavement, but is the parking lot changing, like, is any of this moving backwards, forwards?
Nope.
And so you're not losing any parking, are we gaining parking?
No, not that it's changing. Because if you recall, we're not actually paving anything, so we're not adding any parking. This is going to be, if I remember correctly, we're, we're grading this out and probably putting gravel, but we're not actually paving it and making any...
Right, I just didn't know if it was encroaching on the spaces that were there already, and if this was going to give more room or less. Because the parking did change, and on the new one...
it and making any...
Right, I just didn't know if it was encroaching on the spaces that were there already, and if this was gonna give more room or less. 'Cause the parking did change, and on the new one, there were a couple of things that were actually behind the fence that aren't behind the fence anymore.
Um, the, the previous fence was, if you wanna...
Yep.
So, we did, uh, move this cabinet over here to put it out of view, and we added bushes. I mean, that's one cabinet and a transformer.
But actually, the bushes went from twelve to two.
There were no bushes there before.
No, there originally, there were, have, the original had all these bushes, so it said, there were originally twelve bushes, and now there's two. So, one of my suggestions was, could we move the bushes, you know, that are being cut out? Here's the original, right there. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
So, it'd be strange to put bushes here right now, because we're cutting this down to around there, approximate.
Right.
So, what we have...
But you're adding stuff over here.
Right, and we have one, two, three, four...
That's cut out.
That's cut out?
Yep, it says total of two, if you look. It looks like they're somewhere on here. It said that we're only gonna be two bushes now. 'Cause these are, see how they're lighter? And these have X's through them?
Mm, okay.
Like, now there's only two dark bushes.
If you want us to add some bushes, we can.
You know, and one other thing I was gonna ask before the bushes, is all the equipment's here, which is near where the walking trail is and the parking, could the equipment be on the side?
This...
This side?
This is an equipment, remember. Our equipment is inside. This is simply a transformer, which the actual location is dictated by the utility company, but that transformer cannot be inside. It never can be. The utility company has to have access to that, so it can't be inside the locked compound. Uh, and then this is just a, what's called a Mesa cabinet, which is the little, uh, green cabinets you see for like, uh, the cable company and again the utility connections, so that's not ours. We don't really dictate where that goes, but it cannot be inside the compound.
But could it be on this side of the compound? 'Cause transformers have power, a lot of power. Like, this is the area where people park to hike and kids can access. I would think if it was on the side of the compound that isn't in view by the parking lot as much, if you put the bushes over here and put all the equipment over here, less likely to have kids, like, fooling with it or climbing on it or...
So, yeah, that's up to the power company, um, as it is with everything, everything that comes before you. Can't control where exactly. We can propose where to put it, but they will not put it here, because there's no vehicular access to here. The, there was, they wouldn't want ever to put it behind.
Right, well, this is beside, right? It's just like, the vehicle ac- access goes up here.
Before, before it was right out front.
Right.
So, we thought it would actually be better to move those aside.
Right, I was just wondering if they could be on that side, 'cause you couldn't make the vehicular access be on this side versus on that side.
So, then we'd have to...
I'm just thinking of the safety of people in town, being on the planning board worried about safety and...
Okay, but transformers are frequently near sidewalks. This is not something that's deemed unsafe. Uh, so, to redesign the whole thing just to move the transformers here, um, seems a little bit excessive, and I'm not sure what the reason is. I mean, this is not, this doesn't create a safety issue. This is typical equipment at every single, maybe not every single building that has electricity, but every, um, commercial building that has electricity, and there's going to be one of these for every few houses. So, this is not something novel or new, that's just electrical service.
I know, I just, transformers sound like electrical.
They, they are.
Right, right, but I know when you hear a big boom in our neighborhood, they're like, oh, the transformer just blew. I just didn't think that would be safe on the side where kids can access it. I was just saying, if it could go over there, but if not, if you don't think it can, maybe we can move the bushes over there to try to at least, the bushes that are coming out could go on this side near the, what are they, bollards?
If you want us to put some bushes over there, I'm sure we probably could. I don't think that's really a big deal. Um, just trying to visualize this to make sure we're not going to be encroaching upon any of the trail, and I, I...
Well, the tree line is right here, so...
Do you want us to add some bushes on the tree line?
I drove up there tonight, and I think this is on the left side of the parking lot. The trail was over on the right.
Okay.
I just wanted to, yeah, just to, you know, if kids go up on the trail and just try to mask them, so it's not an added attraction.
We can add some bushes, that's fine. I mean, we, you know, so we have a tree line here, and you just wanna put some bushes between the tree line and the transformer and the, uh...
Sure. Well, adding our twelve bushes, so if we went from twelve to two, I guess we'll add in some more bushes.
Okay, all right, we can do that. I mean, it's bushes on the tree line, it's...
Doesn't hurt. There's probably a lot of trees coming down right here, right?
Um, you know, honestly, I haven't been out there much, but most of the area is clear, because I think we talked about this. I don't think we were removing a lot of trees. We'll be removing less trees, I think, because the size of this is half of what it was. But, like I said, I don't have a problem with adding some trees.
So, where is it? Because we can't see what you're doing.
Oh, okay.
Where, what, where is it that you're talking about?
Well, on the right side, where the, where the, um, bollards, are they called? There are bollards being put in, so is that so cars can't drive into it?
Yeah, bollards protect things from vehicles.
Right.
So, do you want, what side of the bollards do you want the t- trees?
Between the bollards? I, I put them in between. I just wanted to try to mask all the equipment that was there. I don't know much about electrical boxes or how, how they are, just kinda mask it for many of the kids. 'Cause half the equipment used to be behind the fence, now it's inside the fence. It's on the outside.
No, 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 this, again, this is not our equipment. It was never inside the fence.
Well, two of them were.
No, these, they're not allowed to be inside the fence. They never are. They...
No, they've, they've taken away the equipment they don't need anymore. They've taken away... Right, but these two, the meter bank and the telco is behind the fence. No, this, the, wait, the, the solid line's the fence, isn't it? The fence has the X's on it.
No, that's the fence. This...
Okay. So, those two have moved outside?
Uh, a meter bank is not equipment, that's just...
Right, well, it was inside, now it's outside. It's always inside.
And, uh, this is UG Underground Electricity and Telephone Proposed Hand Hole. That's underground. That's just a hole that you can stick your hand through the conduit to access the cable. That's not...
Okay, so these four things are, two of them are underground?
Yes. It's just the transformer and the, um, what they call Mesa Cabinet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking of putting the bushes in between the bollards, bollards. 'Cause we used to have a whole bunch of bushes in there now. Does that want, is that landscaping?
Is, why did, why were the bushes removed? Chris, do you know?
The, there were never bushes over there. We, we didn't remove those bushes. We had additional bushes on the side of the compound that was way far over. We're not gonna be there anymore, so if I can hold this up.
That's, that's on the, um, if, the sheets that I gave everyone tonight. If you hadn't brought the ones that were in the sense that, um, you know, uh, if you don't get...
Let this sink back in. This, this is where it is.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't along, they weren't along the side.
Right, I'm just moving them to that side since they're not along that side anymore either.
Right, but, but, but this whole thing is pulled, is pulled back from the woods, so there's really no need to, 'cause woods will now be here.
Right.
So, there really, so there doesn't need to be the plantings. That's why those plantings have been removed.
Okay, well, I just wondered, and since they're gonna probably have to remove trees to put in the equipment over there, we can put the plantings on the other side.
We're not removing any additional trees to put the equipment over there, but I, I will put the bushes there, but just to be clear...
I was up there tonight, and, um, I looked at the four stakes, and I don't know if that's the old stake, the new stake, but there are definitely a lot of trees in there that would have to come down if you're gonna build something.
So, we are not removing any more trees. We had a fifty by fifty compound. We're removing the trees that just created that. We're cutting that in less than half. We're not removing additional trees to make it smaller. We're removing less trees. Uh, I did not have the opportunity to go out there and look at it.
So, there's, there, there's questions at the planning board. So, there's, um, um, a, a long, um, along one property line, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, and then t- two, well, s- one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, bollards. And along one side is one, two, three, four, five, six. So, you're looking for bushes, the previously approved, the...
Um, yeah.
Abrevadi, uh, uh, what do you...
That's one we were handing out.
Between the bollards.
I didn't have the old information, but this is what, we mount in our package. The plans don't really match, like, these dates don't match the ones on these.
I'm sorry, what?
There were abrevadies in the old plan. And this one says east, and the one says south.
So, they weren't even between the bollards, but you wanted them between the bollards?
There weren't any bollards.
No.
Didn't work with bollards before.
Oh, they were, okay, I, I thought they were...
Aren't abrevadies the one that...
Right, because the, the transformer wasn't there, so it didn't need the bollards.
Between the bollards, it looked like, it looked bizarre, I think. Would be super tall things just kind of sticking up from...
Just on the, it's just on the side, though. It's like, so if you have the compound there, it'd just be like, like, the buffer they were gonna do on the left side is just now on the right side. We were gonna do it before.
Yeah, we'll put it in. We've agreed to put it in, so...
So, we're talking, um, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, um, abrevadi?
Sure.
Okay, so five abrevadies on the northeast side?
Yes, please.
In between the bollards?
Yep. One in shots on our place. Have to be at least four if it's high.
That we want the root ball?
Yeah. So, the whole thing is moved. It's not really moved, it's just lost. It's not being built over here anymore. It's just, it's not moved anywhere. Same spot. And from the original plan, Kathy, or someone in the town was gonna look at the tree before it was installed to make sure it looked full and not like just a fake wispy...
Oh, the, the pole itself?
The, uh...
Well, that's still a requirement.
Right, I'm just...
Right, we're not asking for any change.
Right, I know, I'm just making sure we all remember, 'cause it seems like it's coming close.
You're gonna, you're gonna be on the viewing committee?
Hopefully fake tree technology is approved.
I will.
You can be our...
Yeah, that other one is probably...
It went out tonight.
Right.
It's a good-looking pole.
They're getting better, actually.
Right.
You know, like, like I said, these...
The longer you take, the shorter this is gonna be.
Yeah, it's, it's still a tower. It's not a tree, but, uh, they do look better now than they did ten years ago.
So, Chris, do you know, um, sort of just ballpark, and I know we're gonna keep in touch about this, so that, you know, I can quickly notify, you know, obviously your executive board, um, but, you know, is this a, you know, summer project, or, you know, this summer, next spring, what?
I just talked to the consultant who's sort of, uh, got his head wrapped around all those dates, and the forecast date, um, for foundation work is, uh, July something teen, eighteen or sixteen, so maybe Thursday in July is when they'll start doing foundation work.
Okay, all right. So, so when that gets, um, maybe more solidified, maybe you can just shoot me an email, and that way, you know, we're gonna notify the trails committee, they're gonna put up a, you know, just a sign letting people know that it's...
Yep.
'Cause I think it's, originally people were thinking that it's gonna be, you know, closed for months, but it's really a few days, isn't it?
Um, yeah, I mean, two weeks. You know, I'm trying to remember now why we had to close it, um...
I think it was just a matter of bringing in the equipment and, and just not having people...
Yeah.
Like, having, you know, having a conflict there.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, I don't know that it has to be closed. I mean, you know, obviously the area where they're working has to be closed off. Um, I didn't know that the trail has to be closed.
Well, it was the parking was gonna be restricted, I, I recall.
Restricted, yeah. Um, but, we'll get back to that. Um, I'm just sort of thinking that, um, it's a strategy, you know, but we'll get back to it.
We don't need to vote on this right now.
Uh, no, just, really just sort of, you know, consensus, and like I said, I'll just put it into a memo, um, to, to, you know, add to the file. But that you, you know, you all agree with, uh, um, with, you know, decreasing the size of the, uh, compound area and, um, installing the, um, the five abrevadi on the northeast side.
Anybody disagree with those?
No.
No?
No.
All right, thank you very much. I'll be back again in a minute.
You miss us. You won't go as far away.
They always come back.
They need to expand it to the other three.
Um, is there anything else on the agenda?
Uh, just a, just two quick updates, um, or actually, two things that I just wanted to discuss. Um, the, um, we don't have minutes for you tonight, because right now, there's a, um, there's a, uh, I don't know what you, what you call it, but the, the cable...
A glitch.
Yeah, glitch. The cable company is changing over something, and so we're not able to access, um, the tapes, um, 'cause otherwise, that's, you know, the, the meetings that Elaine hasn't been able to be here, that's, she watches the tapes, you know, as opposed to us, you know, digitally recording them. She's doing that. So, anyway, so, we're, you know, we all, we all know that, just wanna let you know that that's the, the reason why. So, they're in the process of working on that, and once that's fixed, um, you know, Elaine will be able to get to those other minutes. Um, the, um, I, I said three things, but now I can only think of two. The, and the other one I just wanted to know was about , uh, July and August meeting schedule. Um, usually, you know, and historically, um, the board, and most boards go down to one meeting, um, in July and in August, and if you're amenable to that, I was gonna suggest, um, that because July fourth is, would be your next meeting date, um, I was gonna suggest, if you went to the, you know, the third meeting, the, uh, July eighteenth and August fifteenth, but didn't know if people knew vacation schedules yet or anything like that, so...
That works perfectly for me, actually. Let me just double-check the second, the August one, but I couldn't make the first Tuesday in August, 'cause I will be...
Uh, and again, I mean, if, you know...
Those are both fine with me.
Okay.
Okay with me.
Yeah, it's perfect for me.
And, um, it's...
Yeah, what was the August one? I just want...
The...
Fifteen.
The fifteenth.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, um...
And we are meeting two weeks from tonight?
Um, I, uh, yeah, that was, that was another question too, whether you wanted to do that. Um, I don't have anything, um, that has been filed for that meeting, um, for the June meeting.
Well, June is part of summer, and you said we go down to one a month, or first person.
As long as we have time, like, to talk about all the things from town meeting. Like, I know when we go to the duplex and the multifamily, we'll have to start it, like, early fall, 'cause it, at the end of last year, it came down to the very end, and I just wanna at least have the fall to talk about it.
You wanna work on multifamily?
Well, yeah, I wanna talk about it with the duplexes. I mean, maybe not any changes, but just talk about it all as a whole.
The, yeah, the items we had, the moratorium on, that's what we should...
Yeah, the moratorium's on duplexes.
duplexes, right.
We should, we should deal with that, but we certainly put it on the summer agendas.
Yeah, you absolutely have, I mean...
Right.
You know, um, and, you know, and as soon as, you know, you talk about it and I get direction, then, you know, a staff, we can, you know, draft something, but, um, and then, um, the, um, like I said, I'm sorry, I forgot what the third thing was, but, um, uh...
But so, soon, did we decide on the second, two weeks from tonight, then, or we're sticking with it, or we're... Uh, unless something comes up, I don't know that we need to do it. Does anybody really... We don't find any other way, I'm just... Okay, then no.
Um, and then, um, the, uh, ZBA, um, their, their meeting is June twenty-seventh, and I think there's three or four, um, applications in. One of them is a duplex application, and, um, but it's a variance that the applicant is requesting. Um, they're looking, actually, I think it's two variances, 'cause it's two different lots. No, it's one, it's two different lots. Goddard Road, I mean, uh, Barefoot Road.
It's one lot being created, creating two lots.
Two, okay, so two, so two duplexes. Um, this is on Barefoot Road, five Barefoot Road. Uh, it's a vacant lot right now, and, um, it's the industrial zone, and, um, we gotta... And, um, it's the industrial zone, and, um, we got a ruling from town council that because a duplex is prohibited in the industrial zone, um, the applicant can move forward with applying for a variance. Um, but if the variance was granted, um, a building permit couldn't be issued until, um, after town meeting, until, until the moratorium is, is done. Because again, the moratorium varies specifically states special permits and building permits. So that's, that's one of the applications. Another one is a sign, um...
Where, can I ask a question? Where are we at with, um, master plan? Do we need to cattle prod somebody?
The, uh, me.
Okay.
It's all me. It's all me. Um, I just talked about it, um, uh, last Thursday or Friday with the town administrator, and, um, so having them review the RFP that I had originally put together. And, um, so that our, we will go out this summer, and then we anticipate that, what, you know, they'll be hired over the summer, and then we'll begin the public meetings or the, you know, zoning, I mean, the master plan committee meetings in September. So that people won't, um, be at a disadvantage by saying that we started the process in the summer and that you weren't here.
Right, okay.
When does it go out to ask for volunteers? Like, would that go out then before the fall if it were starting in the fall?
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't have a, a date when, you know, but I...
It just gets advertised on the website, the town website, that they're looking for so many, like...
Yeah, yeah, it'll be on the website, we'll send something to the, you know, the press.
Sounds like by the August meeting, we'll have those dates mailed down.
Um, yeah, we, we might even have someone hired by the August meeting, so, but, you know, I'll, I'll keep you up to date on that. That's, oh, I know, I know what I was gonna say. The, um, what's taking ninety-nine percent of my time right now is green communities, because there's a filing deadline, um, that, in order for us to proceed with the green community. So we've met with, um, uh, I, I, I'm in the process now of doing a, um, uh, fulfilling the other criteria. One of them is, uh, getting the, uh, all the electricity usage from all of the town buildings. Um, another criteria is, um, uh, the, the town fleet of vehicles. Um, and we have to, uh, provide a ton of information regarding the fleets. Um, we're gonna be working with a company that's gonna do an energy audit, um, on all of the buildings, so, um, there's, um, so, so there's quite a, there's quite a bit to ramp up on, on that, for that project. So that's, that's where we're at.
I just had one question.
Only one, it's it, it's all you guys.
I know, I know, I'm gonna think hard. It's going back to SA Farms, because that is, um, a lot of talk in town about that. Is there anything that can be added to our bylaws to help avoid that in the future? Like, can there be something about, it seems like more than a farm, he's doing commercial composting, like, he's bringing stuff in, he's not producing stuff to send out.
Is he still bringing in truckloads?
Well, he was, right.
He was, but is he still doing that, too?
On the other side of the road now, right? We can't talk about it, because it's... I was just wondering, as a planning board, if there's anything we can do, like...
The, um, um, the, the operations that he is doing on both sides of the road have been determined to be agricultural in use, and therefore, they're exempt from zoning. And, um, on one side of the street, I provided you, um, with, uh, all the material, well, not all the material, but I provided you with, you know, exactly. It, it's quite involved, and, um, and it, and it may be more appropriate for the town administrator to, um, provide more details, but, um, it's, because it's classified as agricultural, that's, that's the, the, that's the issue that we're having.
Now, is it the state that classifies that? Because I looked up the definitions of agricultural on the state website, and it talked about so much percentage had to be produced and sold, and from what I read in the newspaper, it sounded like here is more taking stuff in than actually producing and selling items. But I was wondering who classified it as agricultural, the, the state?
He...
Or the town, or...
Um, it's, it's a combination of both. The, um, I mean, people can register their farms with the state, you don't have to, he hasn't. But, um, it, a determination was made many years ago by the town that the activities that he was doing, which was bringing in animals primarily, and that's what he has on both sides of the property. Um, he, he purchases animals and then sells them, and, um, and has the, the, that operation and the acreage in order to qualify as, as agriculture.
But could we have, like, prohibit commercial composting? So other people can't come in in the future and start doing that, too? Because when I read about commercial composting online, that's more like a dump, which is really regulated by the state and costs a lot of money, and they have lining, and a lot of it is done inside, like, silos where it's not something that people just dump.
I don't really think that we can, we really should go on with this discussion.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Um, until I, I talk to the town administrator.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things in play right now between the, the town, um, the state, DEP, the attorney general's office, so...
Okay. I was just hoping we could regulate it somehow, for the future.
Well, again, you, you can't if it, I mean, you, you can have a bylaw about commercial composting if you want, but that's not what's happening in our town.
Okay.
Um, so we, you know, because there's, people have equal concerns about another site in town.
Okay.
That, that, again, we have state and DEP and the attorney general very involved with.
Is that other site commercial composting, or that's also farm?
No, no, it's farm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
Third, fourth, and fifth?
All favor aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, David, thank you.